Good evening. Welcome to this evening's Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority meeting. It is June the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at approximately seven P. M. We're gathered here in council chambers of the Centennial Building at twelve South Fifth Street in the great state, in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma, in the great state of Oklahoma. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Brian Pillmore.
Here.
Jeff Wooten.
Here.
Shelley Selby.
Here.
Adam Schreiber.
Here.
Ronnie Zimmerman.
Here.
At this time, we'll have our invocation delivered by Pastor Mike Jones of Town and Country Christian Church, followed by our flag salute. Please rise as you are able.
Our heavenly Father, our almighty God, we are impressed with your power tonight. It's greater than our power. And we're reminded that we're under your authority. Lord, I thank you for the council members and those present, the citizens of Yukon, here to pay attention to what you're doing in this place. May the decisions that are made, the suggestions delivered, may they all be for your glory and your desire for what you want to happen here in Yukon. I thank you for this place, the people, and we turn to you to lead us, one step at a time, speaking the truth in love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Fledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the end, justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. As a reminder, regarding procedure and decorum of this city council meeting, we follow Robert's Rules of Orders, Rules of Order to ensure that our discussion is orderly, respectful, and efficient. City council may only speak on items as they appear on the agenda. The time each item is formally considered. The visitor's section provides an opportunity for any attendee to address the council on any matter related to the city of Yukon or the Yukon Municipal Authority for up to three minutes. At this time, we'll have that visitor's agenda. And anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time, state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to city of Yukon business. The Oklahoma Open Meetings Act prohibits the city council from taking official action on requests made during this portion of the agenda unless otherwise noted on the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? I do have some visitors sign in, but I imagine some of those are for agendted items. All right, at this time, we'll end the visitor's section. We'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June third, twenty twenty-five, the Agreement of Services with OK Chex, Inc., for the use of services provided by the Yukon Municipal Authority during the annual Chex Festival. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action to award the bid and enter into a contract with Brewer Construction LLC for the On Call Waterline Project in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and authorize the mayor-chairman to sign all documents associated thereto, as recommended by the city YMA engineer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Similarly, we'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June third, twenty twenty-five, the minutes of the special meeting, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, payment of material claims in the amount of two million, six hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and three cents, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Renewal Participation Agreement with Oklahoma Municipal Authority Group, O-MAG, Workers' Compensation Plan for a total premium of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit to construct a public water line for an on cue convenience store, the extension of the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Yukon and the city of Oklahoma City for regional household hazardous waste for an additional one year, under the same terms and conditions as the, as the current agreement, the final plat from Williams Family Investments LLC located at sixteen, three hundred West Highway sixty-six, as recommended by the Planning Commission, the Agreement of Services with OK Chex, Inc., for the use of services provided by the city of Yukon during the annual Chex Festival, accepting the Health Center Parkway Drainage Improvements and Placing the Maintenance Bond into effect to serve Health Center Parkway, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the city engineer, the appointment of Joey Scannelli to the Traffic Commission, Ward One Seat, as recommended by council member Zimmerman. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. Now, we'll conduct a public hearing in consideration of declaring Twenty-Four Cedar Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of Chapter fifty-four, Section fifty-four dash two, subsection fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare, directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with Chapter fifty-four, Section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon, directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery cost for such work if done by the city, directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated, and further directing the filing of a notice in the city clerk's, in the county clerk's office. I now open the hearing.
Excuse me, it's about Twenty-Four Cedar, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Ariadna Sibyl. Good afternoon. Yes, well, the house is not in a good condition. When my husband bought it about five years ago, his intention was to remodel it and make it a rent property. Sadly, he's passed away eighteen months ago, and he left a bunch of debt. Right now, I don't have the money to fix it and also don't have the money to demolish myself. So if the city wants to demolish it and then put a lien on to it, I'm willing to accept that because right now I don't have the money to, to fix it and I don't want to be in trouble with the city. I own, we have the El Machado Apartments, and when my husband died, again, he left a very big debt in that one. So even if I want to seek for a loan to fix it and stuff, it's not, it's not possible for me right now. So that's why I come here to make sure that you guys, if you guys need to put a lien on that property, you're more welcome to because right now I don't have the money to do either one of them, neither fix it or abolish it.
Very sorry to hear about your husband's passing.
Thank you, sir.
Did anyone else like to speak at this public hearing? I will now close the hearing. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action to declare Twenty-Four Cedar Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of Chapter fifty-four, Section fifty-four dash two, subsection fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare, directing the city staff to demolish the structure and clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with Chapter fifty-four, Section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon, directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery cost for such work if done by the city, directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated, and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Again, to, to clarify that motion, council member Zimmerman, your motion is, is to move forward with this?
Yes. My, my motion would be to move forward with...
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to award the bid and enter into a contract with Brewer Construction LLC for the On Call Waterline Project in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and authorize mayor-chairman to sign all documents associated thereto, as recommended by the city YMA engineer, as presented in the municipal authority agenda earlier. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. Now, we'll conduct a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number fourteen seventy-four and ordinance of the city council of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, amending Chapter one fourteen Utilities, Article Two Rates and Charges, Section one fourteen dash forty-one, Water and Sewer System Development Charges, amending section to clarify development fees for existing customers, as well as adding fire line connection fees, deleting or repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. I will now open the hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak on these changes to the utility ordinance? I will now close the hearing. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action on ordinance fourteen seventy-four and ordinance of the, of the city council of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, amending Chapter one fourteen Utilities, Article Two Rates and Charges, Section one fourteen dash forty-one, Water and Sewer System Development Charges, amending section to clarify development fees for existing customers, as well as adding fire line connection fees, deleting or repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll open the discussion. I would like to say thank you to Mitchell Horton and to Jason Beal and others within the city, Jason Morrell, and others who have done a lot of work on the utility billing changes that have been implemented in the last, really, the work began even before my time under the leadership of Mayor Selby. And they, with something as extensive as that, sometimes we overlook something. So in this case, we overlooked, we did not want to charge fees to existing customers that are updating connections into our waterline system. We only wanted to charge fees for new development that represents real new costs for the city. So in this case, Mitchell, Jason, Jason Beal, Jason Morrell, and others within the city helped to correct this, and it's really important that we get it done so that we don't overcharge. We had to waive some charges a month and a half ago for somebody that had a water account since nineteen seventy-eight and paid every, every month without interruption. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action on approving the emergency clause for ordinance number fourteen seventy-four. To open the discussion, I'll give by way of background for those in attendance and joining online. Our city charter allows emergency clauses as follows. An emergency ordinance is an ordinance which, in the judgment of the council, is necessary for the immediate preservation of peace, health, or safety, and which should become effective prior to the time when an ordinary ordinance would become effective, which typically would be, give or take, thirty days. In this case, this ordinance, the change to correct an error in our utilities ordinance or an unintended clause in our utilities ordinance, it's essential for the immediate preservation of peace so that we make this correction and we don't harm our citizens financially with incorrect connection fees that were not intended for existing customers. Any other comments or discussions on this item? I make a motion to approve the emergency clause. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action on ordinance number fourteen seventy-five and ordinance amending the Employee Retirement System Defined Benefit Plan for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma pertaining to the determination of service for the chief of police, pertaining to the definition of employee, providing for employer pickup of mandatory contributions, providing for repealer and severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Will you explain what this means?
Yeah, essentially, and it's, it, it makes me kind of sad to think about it, but we are entering into what will be the next, just slightly more than about a year and three days, I guess, three, a year and four days of transition succession planning for our next chief of police. Chief John Corn has been with the city for over twenty-five years, twenty-eight?
Thirty-seven.
Oh, thirty-seven total. Yeah. So we, we have been blessed with that stability. And he's one of the longest-serving police chiefs in any municipality in the, in the state of Oklahoma. But he will retire this time next year. So we're going to make a small change, if this passes, a small change to the retirement plan. We're going to have, this is the real benefit to the city of Yukon here and, and the council operating in the best interest of the city. We fortunately have an entire year to work through that succession process, which I'm sure, as you all can understand, the succession process for a chief of police actually involves two, three, possibly four personnel moves that affect the chain all the way down, depending on whether, whether all those positions are hired from within. So this gives us enough time to work through that. But, you know, materially for the city, what does this mean? It means that we're crediting the chief of police that is in position prior to July one, twenty twenty-six, with a little less than two years of additional credited service. And then it means that we have an orderly succession process to, to work through that over the next little more than twelve months.
Are we going to offer that to all employees?
The short answer is no. But, but we, we do have some... OKMRF is our pension plan provider and is exploring some additional options that, once we get the plans back from them, we can discuss as a council.
So we're just offering it to, and I'm, this isn't against you, John. I, I think you deserve retirement after that many years, but we're not offering it to everybody. That's at this point.
Yeah, similar, similar to, you know, what's been done for other, other long-tenured employees that are in critical positions, that the city needs to take proper prudent succession on. It's a, it's, it's a process that began, actually, the succession planning process began under our prior H.R. Director and our current H.R. Director. And before my time, they have documentation around succession planning for each department director position and other key managers. And, and this is something that the H.R. Director brought to our attention, ran three different scenarios with OKMRF. And, and then with, with the discussion around what the timing of that is, we wanted to have enough time, speak, like, the time being twelve months because currently our deputy chief of police is out of country serving in the military and, and our, our majors are picking up the slack there for our department. So we, we wanted to have enough time to make that happen.
But I guess what I'm getting at is that we're crediting him two years. We have other employees that are right at, close to retirement, that if we credit them two years, they might go ahead, and I just don't think that's fair to do it for one and not the rest.
Yeah, the H.R., council member Selby, the H.R. Director is exploring that option for our long-tenured employees. This study is completed. We'll bring that one to you prior to the July fifteenth meeting, if that's fair.
Okay, because this has been in the works for over a year back before you guys came on.
Not the, the pension change has only been in the works for about three, four weeks, but the succession plan, I think all citizens should know that our H.R. Department does a really good job and has for, for many years. I'm thinking about succession planning for those key positions within the city. And we're at a particular point in time, like, we, we have had some retirements because people have reached that, that age. We have great, long-tenured employees, and good news is, they do a great job for the city. The bad news is, at some point, they, they leave, they leave us. We wish we could keep them all.
Okay. I just feel that we should wait until we can offer it to everybody. That's my opinion. And again, this isn't any reflection on John. I wish him the best. I hate that he's thinking of leaving, but I don't think we should go with one person, that we should do it for everybody.
Any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. John promised me it wasn't because I came on.
Good. I like it. Mr. Castle?
Okay. Zach Castle, seven twenty-eight Villa Avenue. Just for my clarification, the specific change that this ordinance is providing into the retirement plan is this section L?
That's correct.
Is, is an addition? Is it a change from previous section?
It's an addition.
So just adding section L, which adds the extra one point nine seven eight years?
Yeah, the funny, the funny thing about these joiners, I've gotten a lesson on how to read them, thanks to OKMRF and, and Tamara, our H.R. Director, and Cindy Shivers, our prior H.R. Director. When you read through those, you'll see in the joiners, you basically see all the history of the city. So you can go back to whatever, twenty thirteen, and see, you know, what... Essentially, you see actually other succession planning that happened, I'll call it, quote unquote, "a generation ago", like, hey, you know, twelve years ago, this, this wave of senior directors, you know, they had to do some succession planning for it.
Okay. I just wanted to double check because one of the things I was confused about was what specifically was changing. It looks like it's just this one thing.
Yeah, they, there's actually, there's a date on page one that changed. There, I think their nomenclature is basically to bold, this is all OKMRF that prepares these joiners. I think their nomenclature is to bold the changes. There's a few other headings that are bolded, but the big things are, are bolded that are changed.
So like, so does that mean that the contribution formula has changed?
No, it doesn't mean that.
Because that's also bolded in the exact same way.
There's a few, it gets a little confusing. I think that one's still three percent or...
Yeah, that's what it says on here now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castle.
And just so everybody knows, I read through that entire thing before I caught that the bolded section was the change.
Yeah. It's the worst. It's a long thing.
Suzanne Heggie, seven twenty Chateau Avenue. So my question is, kind of in regard with Councilwoman Selby's question. So we're adding an additional two years of service. Do we have a projected cost on that?
Yep. The projected cost for the pension liability, and this is going to get a little bit complicated because you talk pension plans, you talk about accrued liability and then the actual normal cost that occurs year to year. The, the pension plan liability of that is, give or take, three, three hundred thousand dollars.
So is that in this year's budget, next year's budget?
The short answer is the normal cost is, which I have to dig here to pull up. Is Tamara here? Tamara, do you remember the normal cost there for, for, I have it in here, and I can... I'll, I'll dig for it. Give me a second, Miss Haggie.
So then my next question is, so I know you said, explain to me what you mean by succession plan.
Succession planning, probably won't give a very good dictionary definition, is the process that any competent organization of some, of some complexity, our organization is two hundred and fifty-plus full-time employees with multiple departments and layers, go, they go through a succession planning process to ensure that they have leadership that can backfill the prior leadership when, whether those people voluntarily leave the city. And so you don't have an interruption in the enterprise, whether that's a city or business, whatever. You, you go through that process, and that process can vary from organization to organization. Different people do it differently. But in general, it means that you typically have a slate of employees that are ready to backfill or you have a slate of, an idea of where you can hire for the skill set in the marketplace. And like in our case, we have great, in, like, speaking specifically of police, the police are, and fire are, like, better than anybody at doing this because they, they have, like, in the military, right? They have a rank, and people get training, people get years of experience and come up. But it takes time to backfill a chief of police position.
So are you anticipating that the position will not be filled before Chief Corn wants to retire? Or I'm trying to, I'm trying to, to, to mesh the two years of additional service with the succession plan.
Yeah. His, his retirement date will be on or about July the first, twenty twenty-six.
Regardless of whether or not you pass this?
No. Not regardless of whether, like...
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
Why are we giving an additional two years of service if he's going to retire anyway?
Well, he wasn't necessarily. We, we've been talking about, like, he, I, I'm not going to get into the personnel issue in, in particular.
Okay.
But, but suffice it to say that the council and city, and acting city manager have evaluated this situation and the broader succession planning discussion around chief of police, deputy, deputy chief of police, majors, and so on.
I'm not sure I still understand, but I do see that there, there might be an issue with others saying, hey, I'm close to retirement too. How come I don't get an additional two years?
When we looked at this a year ago, there was only like two or three other people that would even qualify for that to, you know, kind of buy out their early retirement.
Mr. Mayor, if I would, the last plan was in two thousand and ten. They did the same thing in two thousand and ten. So this, plus the people coming up, is the second wave from that succession plan or succession. But when that wave retired, these are the people who came in at that time. So it's, there, it is, it's, it's happened in the past, and last time was two thousand and ten.
Yeah, the, Miss Haggie, the, so that, that three hundred thousand dollar impact that I talked about earlier, it's, it's actually a little less than three hundred thousand, but the normal cost is, give or take, twenty-one thousand dollars, it appears here. They ran three. So what happens is, this pension liability that is a little over twenty million dollars that the city has for all the participants in the pension, historically and currently, that liability gets assessed in totality, but they can also run analysis on a particular position. And so this one's going to cost the city about twenty-one thousand dollars more per year. And our pension plan, just for the, just on a broader note, the, the DB five and DB ten pension plans, which are very similar, they're, they're not what new employees come on to. They're older plans, and they're coming to maturity. So any...
So you're ending your defined benefit plans, and now you have a defined contribution plan?
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. It's been a long time since I did pension law.
Yeah, it is. It, it's not easy. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
No.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action on approving the emergency clause for ordinance fourteen seventy-five, fourteen seventy-five. Again, in this case, this ordinance codifies the change to the retirement benefits plan associated with the position of chief of police in the city of Yukon and the associated succession plan. It's immediately, it's immediately critical to preserve public safety within our city to enact this change prior to the end of this fiscal year, continue the succession planning process. Our H.R. Team and our acting city manager, or, and our city manager and now acting city manager have been carrying out. We're unable to discuss the personnel matters further, but suffice it to say that, in my opinion, after becoming deeply familiar with all the personnel issues that are associated with the H.R. Succession Planning Process, this is prudent to enact this resolution immediately. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the emergency clause for fourteen seventy-five.
Thank you, council member Zimmerman. I'll second that. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action on declaring city-owned land located at Frisco Road and Route sixty-six as surplus property, identified as account number zero nine zero zero two three two five zero, parcel ID zero nine zero nine 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 one eight two four one zero 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 one, and account number zero nine zero one one zero two three eight, parcel ID zero nine zero nine 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 one eight two four two zero 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 six, and authorizing the acting city manager to proceed, proceed with the rezoning from property from agriculture to light industrial. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Can you tell me why we didn't go to the Planning Commission with this? Because we always send these to the Planning Commission.
This one is going to the Planning Commission, so this, this, we have to author, as a council, we're authorizing the city manager to prepare the request to go to Planning Commission, and it would likely be heard by Planning Commission on the August eleventh because of, you have to do proper mailings, proper notices, proper publications. Likely go to Planning Commission on August the eleventh.
So proceed with attempting to rezone it, not, I mean, this, what it sounds like is to proceed with rezoning the property.
Yeah, so the property is owned by the city, so it's a little different than, than a private developer. If a private developer owned a property, they would engage their, their engineer, they would engage their development folks to, to prepare a rezoning application. And I had a, I had a citizen call me yesterday and said, you know, hey, why light industrial? You know, would it be better to move to lighter, medium, commercial? Uh, the short answer I gave that person was that it could go really either way. Um, but it's critical to note that this land, and I think all the neighbors around it realize, it's not going to remain agricultural land. Um, and I think our council, as well as many engaged residents, are looking for ways to develop the property in a way that alleviates traffic, noise, crime, and many other concerns that we've heard. So I think it's important that we go about that in, you know, with the right process. We're going to be holding regular meetings of the Economic Development Authority beginning in July. Um, and I'm encouraged by the feedback. We've gotten a lot of email, I got another email today for someone that had some great ideas about how we can develop the property in a way that fits residents', uh, needs.
Well, on that note, on the, I've been, I've had a lot of emails, a lot of conversations, and I know this is going to be further down the road and it's not exactly related this. But I'm going to shift my views on the amphitheater and I know that we're way down the road on that, but after listening to citizens and after having some great conversations, I don't think I can, I, I won't be standing behind that.
Yeah. Well, I think as you guys, um, as you all know, I think many of the citizens in the room and online know, we're going to, we're still finishing up our evaluation process. We're going to be receiving the Hunden, uh, report on July the first. Um, that will become a matter of public record as well. Uh, we got an update from them about three weeks ago that they're on target for that. Um, so the city council has been doing a thorough evaluation. Uh, I know there, there've been supporters and opponents, but at the end of the day, like it's something that we're taking our time on evaluating and, uh, and we want you all to know that we, we've said it before, that we're listening to every piece of impact or feedback.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, uh, I kind of consider myself an outsider to this subject just because I've come in the last three weeks. I have been watching from afar and I want to congratulate all the council on their due diligence and providing the feasibility study and making sure that it is something that either benefits the city, doesn't benefit the city and so forth. And I also would love to, like to thank the citizens for your participation in what we call democracy and the republic. This is exactly the way it's supposed to be. So I congratulate both sides of, of this and it, it's been really interesting and really encouraging to watch the process go through. So thank you both citizens and the council.
I actually leave tomorrow morning at six thirty to go to Colorado Springs and get a tour of the facility and I will be listening to Dirty Heads, which, uh, is reggae music. I see, it's, I think it's pretty nice, but some of the language is really rough. And so I will be watching my Facebook page because I'll be writing a report about it.
It's outstanding. Yeah, I think, I, I think citizens know that every council member's taken time to engage with their uh, citizens in their ward and beyond their ward and, uh, and efforts, uh, like Councilmember Selby is, is taking part in to visit the venue, to do the proper due diligence, to review this, this information and get firsthand perspective. I think that's really critical. In the city of Yukon, we remain open for business. Like we, we want to evaluate these things. We'll even see some things later in the agenda that are outstanding, you know, milestones in the renovation revitalization of our main street.
So back to this, it will go before the planning commission?
That's correct. Yeah, so go before planning and not, and not in July because the timing of mailings and, uh, the newspaper publication have to, uh, properly go forward. And there's a little bit of work that, that, uh, acting city manager and, uh, assistant city manager and staff have to work through.
Okay.
You said you hope Au- August eleventh?
Say that again.
August eleventh.
Yeah, planning commission, I think, I think there's, there's one in July, but it doesn't work, um, timeline wise, so it'd have to be August eleventh. Yes, please.
Blaine Nice, one hundred North Broadway, up on the city on behalf of the citizens here, um, not everybody, but this group. Uh, I do appreciate you say that's going to have to track the normal development process. Uh, my question, I haven't asked Mr. Reinhardt about this, but there's no going to be tracking with the council where you put it on right after that, you're going to have the normal process, normal planning, planning.
Normal planning commission process, yes, sir.
In light of, uh, Mr. Wooten's comments, is there any consideration by the planning commissioner of the council to develop this as a PUD? We can restrict some things or, or make things because under light industrial ordinance, I mean, there's things there that may not be the most.
Yeah. Prior, I, I think, Mr. Nice, we appreciate you coming and, and sharing your perspective as well with Attorney Reinhardt.
Right.
Um, absolutely. Yeah. So the short answer is, there's no way that our council is going to allow this property to be developed in any way that's a nuisance.
Okay.
So the short answer is, yeah, a PUD or ordinance-led, uh, restriction.
Restriction.
On, on how, everything from the beautification on the streetscape to the setbacks, to the, and all the concerns that the citizens have had around traffic, noise, et cetera. That all has to be handled.
Now, this is a big tract and you want it to be developed to the best benefit of the whole of the city, so I appreciate that. I just want to be sure that that is open for discussion. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of uses under light industrial, but it may not be the most appropriate out there. And I understand light industrial is important to a city. It's harder and harder to have that industrial. Um, that's kind of sacred in a lot of places because it's running out and everything's developed otherwise, so.
We appreciate your experience. Thank you, sir. Ms. McAllister.
Uh, Amy McAllister, one four one seven five West Highway sixty six. Well, first off, Mr. Wooten, we've never spoken directly, but thank you. I, I can tell you on behalf, I think of everyone sitting around me, we breathed a sigh of relief because.
Do I need a button?
You need a button. Absolutely. I've got one.
Charlie would give me one.
Hey, Joe, J- Joe? Hey, Joe Horn, do you have a button? I could have. You weren't listening. I need, I need a, okay, thank you.
There we go. Thank you. I think, I think what that tells us though is we can now, as a community, really get down to planning something that will work for all of us. So I, I have a sigh of relief and, and my first paragraph was talking about why are we labeling this amphitheater land if it's not a done deal? That set off a red flag to me. There are a couple of references though throughout the appraisal. Can we talk about that? Is this, as part of this?
Um, the appraisal is included because it's, it's a matter of public record, but it's not part of our agenda discussion, Ms. McAllister. I welcome, I would welcome any, you know, if you want to send myself or the city manager a message, we'll definitely disseminate it to, but that we have to stick to this particular agenda item.
That sounds good. Well, thank you. I, I appreciate it, Mr. Wooten, and hopefully the rest of you all will agree with it and we can move on to greener pastures.
Thank you so much, Ms. McAllister. Mr. Castle.
Um, Zach Castle, seven twenty eight. Um, so just for my, first of all, I want to say thank you to everyone who has been communicating with various citizenry, uh, answering emails, talking to people in person, talking to people on the phone. That you are all listening is a huge sigh of relief for everybody who had concerns about the amphitheater and about its potential impacts. Um, that being said, moving back to the agenda item, actually. So what does it mean to, uh, take the land that's city-owned and declare it a surplus property for the uneducated amongst us?
Yeah, it basically says that as, it's a municipal asset today and it doesn't, right now, it, it doesn't have any specific purpose. It's raw land. And so this, this is an action that is, um, I mean, I guess it could be debatable whether it's required or not, but it's prudent. Uh, if, if any private development was to occur, uh, that it would have to be declared as surplus.
Okay.
So you, like, if we were just going to, you know, uh, mow it down and, and plant grass and, and put in swing sets, not, not required, but, um, to market a surplus is a step that you have to take prior to, um, any sale of part or all of the property.
So for clarification, so if someone wanted, let's say we wanted to build a, I don't know, uh, a rocket ship to the moon, I'm blanking on things right now. Uh, but we wanted to sell it to SpaceX because they want to build a rocket ship right there. Jokes aside about the actual noise, but, um.
Won't fit, won't fit with light industrial, but yeah, you would have to declare it a surplus before you do so.
Okay. So I just wanted that to be clarified for my purposes, just so I understood that.
Yeah.
And then light industrial, I know you, you mentioned, uh, an email, I think, about why light industrial. Is it just because it opens up more opportunity? What's the?
Yeah, I think it can go, like, this is my perspective and it could go light industrial, light commercial, medium commercial. Like, in my mind, that's, those are probably the three options that would, uh, uh, we wouldn't do medium or heavy industrial, like, all these other options would create more traffic, more noise, more, and we've been listening to your feedback. And so, you know, the thought here, and it can always change later, right? Like, this is one step and the city manager, the acting city manager, the assistant city manager, they have to prepare this and go to planning commission. It'll look at it then, you know, planning commission will look at it then. Um, so it may or may not be the right fit and it's really critical that we, we're going to get moving on it, just like we got moving on the appraisal. Took a little time because appraisers are busy. So now you have that in the public record. Clearing a surplus is another key step. Rezoning is another key step. So these are steps towards development.
I just, and I, and I get understanding the process because again, um, Ms. Selby brought it up. I was going to bring up, she didn't. Um, the way it's written does just say, it seems like, I know now it's not, just to proceed with the rezoning, that was my concern initially was, oh, this should go through the planning commission probably, like all rezoning.
The rezone has to go through, uh, a mailing to the certified list of property owners that occurs twenty days prior to planning commission. Then, uh, publication the newspaper fifteen days prior to planning commission, then the planning commission hearing. Planning commission will opine, then council.
And then, um, I think it's almost everything. Um, and, uh, this would just rezone the entire, both parcels of the land to.
That's correct, yeah.
If the planning commission approves and.
We called out both, both parcels, yeah. It could be subdivided differently at a later point, but, but for now, that's the direction.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, thank you, guys. Cheryl Scott, five oh, five zero four Frisco Ridge Road. First off, I'd like to say when we started this effort and, and kudos to the city council because we've had, I think, a very good rapport with the city council a- and, and I have not met Councilmember Wooten, but, uh, I'm glad you got a button. And, uh, but I, before, I just have a couple of questions. I, I had a whole list depending on if we were thinking the worst instead of the best, but when we saw this agenda item, I said I was optimistic because it looked like we had a sea change. Uh, and we didn't know. This organization of, uh, opponents to the amphitheater have always purported, proposed that we support any development other than the type that's there for the amphitheater. And this organization can continue in another name and help the city with this development or whatever happens. We're, we're there to do that. We, we, uh, we're really good at researchers, which you probably have figured out. We're really good at getting open records requests. Um, and those kind of things, but, um, I have a question and it, it relates to the zoning and the property. Do you anticipate or do you have an idea of the timeline of the zoning and relationship to the conveyance of the property? And I'm assuming the property would be conveyed, sold in parcels, not all of it, but maybe all of it. But other words, I guess the question is, when, when would that property convey as a surplus property, you think?
I think it, it's not something that, the conveyance doesn't occur quickly, like thi- this is a large tract and
Right.
there's a lot of planning that would have to occur. Um, so I think the short answer is, we're open for business. Bring us ideas. Uh, council members are all engaged. The city staff is engaged. Like, we need, I, great ideas. We need, we're going to, as I said, we're going to kick off the, the meeting, the regular meetings of the Economic Development Authority, which has been meeting more reactively in the past. But it's going to have now regularly scheduled meetings with regular agendas. I think that those are venues where we, we ought to be, you know, considering all the great things that can happen for, for Yukon.
So the zoning will be done before?
It has to be done. Yeah, well, I mean, I say it has to be done before. There's two, I mean.
Well, probably because of the timeline, it looks like so.
It's the city's property, so the city can, has, it's, it's a weird, it's a weird situation we find ourselves in, in that the city can direct the development.
Yeah.
Right? Like, we have choices.
Right.
Whereas if a developer comes, they say, here's my rezoning application, they go before planning.
Right.
Commission.
Yeah, you, you have some control of that process. Just from my curiosity, you don't have to answer this, you don't too, but the abrupt change to declare the surplus, was that part of the appraisal?
It was planned, it was planned, so we, Roger.
It was a plan B?
Roger sent me this wonderful email. I said, Roger, what do we have to do here? And he sends me this long email of, here's what is required for you to, uh, take action on any municipal land. And by the way, don't, don't try to sell parkland. That's the other thing he told me.
Oh, yeah.
Um, because of, yeah, he's.
Yeah, held in public trust. That's not.
Attorney, you may have some experience in that. So, um, so long story short, Roger laid that out for me in, I don't know, March, April, I can't remember. And said, you have to get an appraisal. So, you know, we knew that that takes a long time, so we ordered the appraisal. And we got that, you just got that in the packet. And then the next step on his list of things, uh, his to-do list that he gave me was, declare it as surplus. He said, you can't, prudently, you can't do anything without declaring the property a surplus.
And you would probably get another appraisal once you rezone it because appraisal value would probably go up.
Um, possible, possible.
I think it would.
Yeah.
I've had a, another appraisal just glance at one of the guys whose father's taught for, till he was eighty-three years old at OU and, and this field. And they appraised it as the highest best uses I've.
That's correct.
And that's what they do, so, and that is whatever. My only other comment, and I don't really want to get into this because it's down the road. I appreciate your comments because I have vetted the, uh, venue and talked to a lot of other experienced people and their business model just doesn't seem to work for Yukon, is my opinion. But you guys are getting a, a.
We're eval, we're evaluating that, sir, and that's a little bit off of our.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but that's, I appreciate that.
We appreciate your feedback.
Bill Baker, five hundred Castle Rock Road, Yukon. Uh, I, I know, I don't know the, the dollar amount, but I assume there's a dollar amount above which, uh, things have to get bids. Is that correct?
A bid, yes, yes.
Before the city can spend money. Uh, and I don't know if that applies to real estate fees or not, but.
Real estate fees?
Real estate commissions.
Commissions, yes, sir.
Um, I, just as a private citizen looking for a long way out at things, I didn't know, you know, exactly how they went down. Have not been real comfortable with how realtors were chosen in the past for city buying and selling of land.
Oh, yes.
And I would really like all, every time that this comes up, uh, especially now that the courts ruled that real estate fields are not fixed in America, uh, that, uh, you ask a lot of questions. Why are we picking this realtor? How'd it happen? Did we get bids? Did we save the taxpayer the greatest amount of money possible, uh, from this date going forward?
Yes.
The past is the past, water under the bridge, uh, in the future, uh, I appreciate it.
I agree with that, Mr. Baker, and, uh, in particular, I think that we owe it to our citizens and to taxpayers to steward those dollars well and something on a, as valuable a piece of property as this is, if it's chosen to be listed with an agent, it's absolutely critical that, uh, that we evaluate and get, you know, whether it's, uh, a competitive process is critical and how the selection occurs is really important. Thank you. All right. Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Tillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion of possible action regarding a request by Wallace Design on behalf of Life Church for an additional driveway off of Main Street, Route sixty six at eleven oh one East Main Street, as recommended by the planning commission. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I drove back there today on my way to council meeting and, you know, we had talked about this when Fr- uh, Frontline wanted to, you know, a- as they at Workforce has said that they will let us use that parking, that's additional parking for our downtown businesses back in the back.
I think that as we've looked at this, the, the challenges that come to my mind, and I haven't had really, I haven't had enough uh, information from, from the engineers to understand all the potential impacts, but the deceleration lane and its interaction with the intersection, which is very close, and then the, essentially creating another curb cut in.
No, 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 this is the, oh, gosh, I am so sorry, I am so sorry.
Sorry, I was trying to.
I thought we.
Say we're on fifteen.
Forgive me, I'm ahead of you guys, I'm over here. So, Life Church.
Yeah, so I.
I thought we were on, I'm seeing Main Street, sorry, Life Church.
Yeah, um, Councilmember Selby, you control the motion here. Uh, any other discussion on, on this one? I, generally, I, 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 I don't control the motion, but I would like some more time to, to look at this one. Um, I wanna understand, I know ODOT has kinda given their, their blessing or approval, or whatever ODOT calls it. I, uh, worry about the length of the decel lane, I worry about the uh, the, I don't worry so much about the right-hand turning into Life Church. I worry about the folks coming out, right-hand turning onto Route sixty-six. The speed, I know that the speed is gonna eventually be reduced on Route sixty-six, but right now it is fifty-five, right there until you get to Yukon Parkway. And then, um, and then the uh, a- and then the, the challenges with the long-term plan, in my understanding, and this is really vague recollection, so we need some update from ODOT, around the turn lane, the long-term plans for increasing turning lanes at that intersection itself.
So, do you wanna explain some of that?
Patrick Goldendorf, Wallace Design, four ten North Wall, Nodocle, Missy, Oklahoma, I'm the engineer on the project. Um, so just to give a little background, we worked closely with ODOT, um, starting last year, also closely with city staff, Mitchell Hore, uh, Danielle as well, um, and the city engineer. So the deceleration lane itself, um, it meets and exceeds the ODOT requirements and city requirements. Um, so we did make that longer than uh, the requirement, which was based on traffic data.
What is the, the length of it? Is a hundred feet?
So it's a hundred and twenty feet, um, and um, we actually took traffic data from all the um, services of Life Church to be able to calculate that. Um, and it exceeds the minimum requirement.
Are you all open to a time restriction, like putting a gate there and only opening that gate during uh, Wednesday nights and, and Sunday services?
I'll need to check with Life Church on that. Um, and we did, so just from a timeline perspective, we've been working on this since last year. And then we all, we were on the traffic commission agenda, um, in uh, April, and there was no quorum. And so we got pushed an entire month to May, and then now this is our third meeting, so we received traffic commission approval in May, planning commission approval in June, and so by pushing this, um, it's just gonna extend this process. So we would really like to keep it on the agenda tonight, um, given the amount of information and design that we've um, done at this point.
It's not like it's gonna be five o'clock traffic coming down Route sixty-six, Sunday mornings are not that heavily trafficked, I'm, I'm.
And, and the benefit too, is it helps operations, but it also takes traffic off of Yukon.
Right.
Um, and Parkway there, right uh, next to the church, and so it really helps the congestion from the neighbors coming and utilizing that street as well. We've received good feedback, um, from neighbors as well with our plan, and, and.
I'm in support of it for the service times, for the in- ingress and egress for service times on Wednesdays and Sundays. I'm really concerned about somebody, um, I saw this happen in Phoenix, Arizona, one time, where someone pulled out of a synagogue on a, a midweek, you know, mid-morning time, and they pulled out onto a busy street. Um, because there were just a bunch of curb cuts on this very, very busy thoroughfare in Scottsdale, and got hit on the side. And I get it, like, when, when people are coming and going on Sundays, it's light traffic for everything else, and people come and go. I would support it if, if Life Church was willing to essentially restrict the time, so we could grant the curb cut, but essentially say, hey, you need to put in a gate and restrict access at all times besides the Wednes- like, Wednesday from five PM to ten PM, and Sundays from six AM to six PM, or whatever, whatever reasonable service times there are.
Faster?
Yeah, and I don't, and just from that perspective, um, you know, I guess the, the enforcement of that is based on, is that a, is that a zoning enforcement?
We would, we would likely ask our city attorney to prepare a, a memorandum, uh, that's agreeable, and, and uh, captures this idea, and essentially put it into the uh, to, into the land records with that, with that plat.
Because uh, we meet all the city ordinance right now with driveway spacing, uh, we, we have ODOT approval already written and in the city.
Yeah, I mean, I, you can meet all the, you can meet all the ordinances, right? You can meet all the requirements that are laid out in code, but the council itself is determining whether to grant a curb cut on a state highway in our city limits, and that's well within our authority. We, we grant curb cuts if somebody wants to put in a new driveway, we grant curb cuts if a commercial business wants a curb cut. And this is, if you read the comprehensive plan, the, the biggest issue with Garth Brooks traffic that they highlight, I mean, aside from light timing, which is always a work in process, aside from light timing, curb cuts. We denied a curb cut last year, uh, before even, like, we said, there's not support for that curb cut, another curb cut on Garth Brooks. Um, and so we're trying, I mean, yes, there's not, it's not a.
Yeah, there's not a curb cut prior to that, except for the, is it Moose Lodge or?
Yeah.
Oh, way back there.
Yeah, it's not real dense there, it's not real dense. I'm really concerned about the proximity to the intersection, that's my biggest concern.
Um, and that was briefly discussed, but what, what we decided was that by, by providing an acceleration lane, you would almost exasperate the issue of people trying to cut across. Um, so that's the approach of the deceleration lane with the uh, ride-in, ride-out with the city standard is what we proceeded with.
Also, I understand, I, we don't have, like, future plans to put a turn lane there heading north?
Yeah, I think ODOT does, ODOT has those future plans, that's my concern.
How's this gonna interfere with that?
I don't think, I haven't seen any of that in the study materials, that, of how, what the long-term ODOT plan is for that intersection, and how this interacts with that. That is not in the, in the study materials.
You're talking about.
For the people going north.
Lengthening the current.
Well, that's what they were, they were talking about, basically increasing, like, adding turn lanes and increasing length and so on, and making Yukon Parkway and Route sixty-six a bigger intersection. Like, a, a bigger, better flowing intersection.
Danielle, what was Steph's thoughts on all of this? Would you come tell us that?
Good evening, uh, yes, there was some concern on that, but we talked with the engineers and was comfortable with what the engineering decided. Um, there was a, a previous discussion with a previous ODOT engineer, um, but then with that change, uh, with the new engineer, he's having some further conversation, and uh, we were comfortable with what the engineers decided.
Another concern is without, without having a turn lane headed north on Yukon Parkway, as traffic builds up west on the sixty-six, people are gonna start cutting through that parking lot, I mean, like crazy. Um, and furthermore, now we're gonna have to deal with it, them cutting out of the parking lot while we're trying to take the right way, headed north on Yukon Parkway.
Okay. Travis Reynolds, Director of Architecture for Life Church, and you say, can you provide us with your street address, sir?
Forty-six hundred East Second Street, Edmund.
Thank you. Um, when you say you could support it if we would restrict access, and you made a hand motion like you're, like an, a timed armed.
Oh, it doesn't have to be an arm, it could just be a gate.
So, could it be a simple gate that's, you know, our staff is responsible for closing and locking and unlocking?
Oh, yeah.
Church would be acceptable, I mean.
That'd be acceptable to you.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want a timed mechanical arm.
No, 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 I'm not.
Okay.
You could architect it.
We, we could, we could, yeah, we would be. Basically restricts access, like, it, it prevents, this is my, this is my fear, and I, you know, pardon the, the scenario. Somebody goes to the church for a midweek Bible study, or goes to church to talk to pastor, and they come out on Route sixty-six and, right, I mean, until ODOT changes the speed, it'll be a little bit more plausible when ODOT changes the speed to forty-five, but right now it's fifty-five. And somebody comes barreling down there, and they're just looking at the intersection, they're not looking at Life Church, and they don't expect it. On Wednesday night or Sunday night, yeah, everybody's coming and going, they expect it.
Together We does that, they have uh, access to the neighborhood, and they close it off, because people do cut through from the neighborhood to get up, so they don't have to go down Garth Brooks, and they just have a chain that has a flag on it, and it, they just close it up on Sunday mornings or Wednesday nights, they take it off. And it works great for them.
Well, just wanted clarity on that, but if, if, if that's acceptable to you, it's acceptable to us.
Okay.
Councilmember Selby, would you, oh, go ahead, sir.
No, thank you, you're done.
Did the planning commission have any input?
Uh, Jared Wright, one twenty-five West Parkland Drive. Like, I get what you guys are trying to do, is like restricting things, but the, the uh, access medical clinic on Cornwell and Vandemit, people cut through that, and the police are able to, 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 to minimize that, or to police that, but, excuse me, there's nobody there during the week, so offense, if that, if that gets them where they need to be, then I can, I can buy into that. But I think what you guys are missing is that the traffic northbound on Yukon Parkway on Sundays with people trying to get into Walmart, or trying to turn west on you, on uh, sixty-six, that's the congestion. This will just relieve that, because we all leave out the west.
Yeah.
And we're all going back the other way.
I can understand that.
So, honestly, like, I looked at this from a, a lens of like, what's best for the community, and not my church, because it is my church, but i- it will help Walmart, if anything else, so, sure, maybe a, a gate will help, but uh, I think we're overthinking this a little bit, I don't think it's gonna hurt much.
Yeah, I think Wednesday, Wednesdays and Sundays, I'm not that worried about it, I'm a little, little bit concerned when somebody makes a right-hand turn out of there, and, and how close they are, and I'm a little bit concerned if somebody tries to make a right-hand turn, and then an immediate left onto Yukon Parkway. That is a little concerned too, because they cross three lanes of traffic to get in that turn lane, that concerns me a little bit. But I hear you, exactly what you're saying on the northbound traffic, this is gonna alleviate the whole thing, um.
It concerns me too, but you can't fix stupid, so if these people can't drive, then, you know, I mean, at some point, where, where do we hinder the whole community, just for a couple of people that can't drive, so.
Well, I, I, I agree, I agree with you that.
Sorry, I'm trying to be light about it, but.
That you can't fix stupid, but we, as the council, I think, really do spend, and I know you all do on planning commission as well, spend an enormous amount of time thinking about the preservation of peace, health, safety, and preservation of life. Um, and you may not be able to fix stupid, but you can sometimes mitigate uh, danger, the inherent danger in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Selby, um, just as a matter of discussion, would you be at all willing to modify your, uh, you have the motion on the floor, would you be willing to modify for that gate restriction?
You guys are okay with that? Okay, this is called a compromise, yes, I will, so that we can pass this.
All right, Councilmember Selby has, has the motion on the floor, it is, uh, if I don't, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but uh, essentially to uh, restrict to Wednesday evenings and, and all day Sundays.
Do you do service on Saturday anymore?
Maybe for Easter, Christmas, things like that.
Well, we'll allow Saturday evenings as well, Saturday evenings as necessary, um, uh, with, with a memorandum um, to be drafted by city attorney that's agreeable to the uh, Life Church, and reviewed by their legal counsel, to be recorded, memorandum to be recorded in the uh, property records, and uh, a properly architected gate in, in conformance with city code. Um, is that, did I put too many words in your mouth?
No, that's fine, and like I said, uh, Together We just has a, a chain there.
Yeah.
Something that keeps people from going, yes, that's fine.
Great. Uh, do I hear a second? I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooton?
No.
Selby?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes. Discussion of possible action regarding a motion to rezone from R two residential medium density to CG Commercial General from Miller Main Street, located at four twenty-five West Main Street, as recommended by the planning commission. Do I hear a motion?
Sumoed?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd like to give a shout out to Miller Main Street, you know, this uh, and Michael, thank you for joining us this evening. It's a, this is the, one of the greatest examples, I always point to ten West Main, now I've been pointing to the Mercantile Building, the historic Mercantile Building that Michael and his team have been uh, in the midst of a, a great renovation of, and they've got half of the interior done, and the other, the other portion is ready to, to uh, begin, and this is, it might seem like a weird thing. They've renovated the interior, and now they have essentially users' office, office kind of space, um, for, for workforce uh, programming. This residential to commercial is essentially for a parking lot, the parking lot is gravel in the back, this is, before they go ahead and pave it, this has to be rezoned, then they're gonna pave it for uh, uh, for use from the, the tenant there.
And we can use it when y'all aren't open.
Uh, yes, ma'am, Michael Carnuccio, twelve forty West Southwest Fifty-Ninth Street, um, yes, ma'am, the, the occupants of the building and soon to be announced, we're looking to open a cafe on the first floor, and so we, we would probably have some signage there that, for the customers there during normal hours, but there's no intention to chain it up or anything, we'd like to, w- we're hoping to foster more traffic and activity there, and I think the parking would help with that.
I think you're already fostering that traffic, that's good. Um, if you haven't been in, inside of that building, I highly recommend it, drop by, you know, knock on the door, go in, get a tour, the, the first floor is immaculate, the second floor is even better, um, i- it's a great, uh, you know, reuse of, of a historic building. Seeing no more.
This is gonna put a hamper in, check day, because where they're talking about, isn't that where you guys put all the big?
Nothing goes there.
Nothing went there?
No, it went down, it went a step down, a step. Yeah.
Where we had it, okay.
Yeah, down by the lumberyard, um, okay. Any other discussion on this item? Sorry, sir, could you please approach the podium if you'd like to speak?
Please. Jim Tyson, one thirty-three Sequoia Park, Yukon. Just wanna know if they're gonna pave that back there for parking, will they pave that alleyway too, or blacktop it, or?
Yeah, it's, it's something that, um, I know I've received an email about the concerns there, and uh, we've heard that from some other business owners. I think it's something we have to consider.
Okay.
Thank you. Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes. At this time, I'll have discussion of possible action regarding bids received for the Route sixty-six side project. Approving and awarding a contract and acceptance of bonds is recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
Sumoed?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on this item? Mr. Acting City Manager, are you and the staff comfortable with identifying some potential locations for these? We've ident, we've, we've discussed three, three potential locations, are you guys in the midst of working on that?
Yes, sir, we're in the middle of it, we're, it's gonna be pretty close to the existing signs that we have, and there'll be an addition to those. And it'll be a great place for people driving through for selfies and stop to make pictures, so, yes, sir.
Potential raise of hands, has anybody seen the, I, I don't mean to offend, but the rinky-dink sign that's over in El Reno?
They have a really cool filling station, though.
It is, it is cool, but ours is gonna be way better, it's gonna be the greatest. All right.
It's gonna be elite.
It's gonna be elite, it's gonna be amazing.
So, is there, um, I, I saw, like, there are several bids, weren't there?
There were two bids, uh, the, sorry, the, um, I assumed.
Which one are we going?
Who made the motion? Who, who has the motion? Okay, is your motion to accept the highest scored bid?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the highest scored bid is Metro Sign, Councilmember Selby.
That's what I thought, but.
Are those the designs? Ms. McCallister, it'll be, it's.
You'll have some time, okay.
It, go, go ahead.
I have.
Ask your question, yeah.
Okay, um, I love the design, that's why I was just showing Charlie, I think it's very nice, and fifteen feet high, that's fantastic. The question that I have, I read through the bid response, I read through the bid proposal, uh, request for bid. The only concern I have is number seven states the signs should be designed with expectation that visitors in Yukon may take photos with the signs, which I would agree they probably will. However, the location on the west sign specifically is right in front of our house, it's that quarter of a mile, of course, you know, around Frisco Road is what it shows. And my only concern is there's no mention in either one of the documents about accessible parking.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so is that gonna be built in?
A great point to bring up, so that, that is outside of the scope of what Metro is doing, but the city, the city is going to do that.
Should that maybe be included then? I mean, I know it can't be in their bid, but I think that needs to be documented, that you all are going to actually put.
Yeah, it just isn't part of the bid proposal, so, because otherwise, uh, Metro Sign would be on the hook for paving, and that's not a scope of work that they do. Um, Acting City Manager and Arnold, and our Director of Public Works, Arnold Adams, have committed to doing that. Um, but I think you raised a good point, and it's something the city staff is looking at very intently, uh, because we intend to put three of these signs, and they're, they're gonna be spectacular, I'm really excited about this, and it's gonna be done in ten weeks, uh, the signs will be prepared in ten weeks. Um, so it's gonna be done before the twenty twenty-six centennial.
Yeah.
Of Route sixty-six. And they're gonna be great for, you know, taking pictures, selfies, slow people down coming into Yukon and hopefully they'll stop and stay and do stuff in Yukon right on Route sixty-six. But they're they're prob- we, there's some complexity to work through with ODOT because this is a state highway. Um, where where can we safely have people stop? I think the best stopping point, which may make sense, is going to be in the middle of town. That the central location one, I think, will be near where, near where the railroad tracks are, near where the existing welcome to Yukon sign is in the middle of town. And we owe, like the city owns that property, so we can control what uh parking, accessible parking we place there.
Okay, I would encourage you guys, the I'm on the Route sixty-six Centennial um Committee that we're doing some huge event and uh trying to write a grant. To get a big thing. We haven't decided yet what that big thing is. I would encourage you guys so that we don't overlap and try to put them in the same places and but so we can put it throughout the city. So Jenna um is on that committee too, so.
Good.
Well, and my other question with that, just based on where it was initially drawn on the map, um, that is fifty-five. So it's like, should you then also maybe make a recommendation to slow the speed down if people are gonna be pulling over?
On the east side of town, the the speed change is already in the works, is my understanding with ODOT. On the west side of town, I have not heard anything yet on west side of town.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action regarding approval of year-end budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll kick off the discussion here to provide some color on these budget amendments. I spent a good amount of time with uh Finance Director Brian Chris yesterday. And I said. How do we have this amount of overage in these dozen accounts? Uh, I was quite frankly uh shocked. And um. So he said, he informed me and I should have thought of this before. It was my my mistake to not think of it. Uh, these are just the overages. We don't move money any longer from one fund to another, from one department to another, from one series to another, or one account to another. We stopped that. Uh, a little more than twelve months ago. And so in prior years, these would, you know, the 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 shifting would have occurred. And monies would have moved from fund to fund or department to department and you wouldn't have had these budget amendments. I said, so how many budget accounts are we under and what's the materiality of that? He said, well, I started to prepare that and I got a little bit down the path, but I couldn't put it on one, he was good, prepare it. In a budget amendment, but then he realized, oh, I don't have to budget for the stuff that we're under on. So these are just the overages. There's over a hundred accounts where we're well under budget. And so after reviewing that with him, that gave me comfort. Um. And so the the finance team, um, it tries to do this accurately and the more material items I dug into and asked about and and um, I know he's prepared to speak about any of those particular ones, but. Some of them, like the police one was one of the most significant ones for overtime. We had some injuries within the police department. We had some uh officers that were placed off duty for some time. We had to call in other officers, so. Uh, basically the the overtime jumped up for a few months and.
I was a little upset over that one because just last week we voted to send twenty guys to Oklahoma City and I assume when I said, how are we gonna pay for that? And John said, in my overtime budget, I assumed we had money in the overtime budget.
Yeah.
I didn't know we were a hundred and thirty-seven thousand over.
I think he has, yeah, he has money in the in the police budget, not necessarily in the overtime budget. Um, and we can follow up with that in particular um and give you some more detail on that. And I know that there's an open question. I think I wasn't in attendance for the prior meeting, but I think that there was still an open question of getting back with. The total cost of what it costs us to support Oklahoma City and send our officers for mutual aid.
So if you take how many are under and how much is over, what's the total amount?
Mister Chris, would you like to provide a little summary there?
Thank you for the question. I uh I very much appreciate um all of your involvement and 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 truly sincerely, um, another set of eyes to make sure that what we're doing is. Um, accurate and to the best of city and citizens' needs. Um, so one of the things to consider is um, we legally have a requirement to make sure at the end of the year that we are not over budget on any series account. So what that means is um, and I think maybe what Corn, uh Chief Corn was referencing, he did have extra monies in a separate account within that account series. However, we had to plan um prior to the event occurring, the preparation of this budget amendment, um specifically like police salaries. So the intent um is to just try to ensure that there is additional funds. It doesn't mean we have to spend any additional funds that are not needed and then there's a little high likelihood. Um, specifically in that case that we may be underneath and and may not actually go over the budget at all. Um, but since um in the past, we have had a finding before as a city of not allocating um that prior to close of year end, it I wanted to be overly conservative. Um, just in preparing the budget amendments. Um, to answer your question, yes, um, the financial um. Uh, update will kind of provide that information. Uh, within the general fund, we're still about two million dollars as of the end of May underneath. Um, where we should be um in the general fund expenses, so it it's likely offset to to the mayor's mayor's point. I I could have gone account by account and and separated it. We did have the reserves. Um, after conversations with city manager, we felt like the most appropriate course of action. Um, is was to be conservative in making the budget amendments to ensure that we did, we followed, you know, the law and some of the salary items. Um, like the addition of my position, for example, is really the what pushed the finance department so high. So um, just some things we needed to address. There is a plan already within the finance team to address next year in the next fiscal year moving forward. Um, we hope to minimize this list and you'll see them more in real time versus at the end of the year um as a wrap-up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate the leadership of our newly created uh position of Finance Director and Brian Chris's uh leadership there. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action regarding proposals received for audit services, including selection of a proposal and authorized execution of the engagement letter as recommended by the Finance Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And the mo- uh Vice Mayor Wooten, the the motion is to accept the proposal from Arlegan Associates that was included in the council packet?
Correct.
Excellent. Uh, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to accept the proposal from Arlegan Associates PC and move forward with the engagement as drafted in the engagement letter. Any discussion on this item? I also appreciate the work that Brian Chris, uh prior city manager Mike Castro, uh Acting City Manager Jeff Deckard. Assistant City Manager Mitchell Horton and Brian Chris's finance team staff have gone through to run a competitive process. To uh solicit bids for the audit services and selecting this professional services provider. Um, this provider is also uh doing the audit uh for several municipalities and their engagement letter, I think, shows that. It's it was really, when I read through it, really thorough, thinking about all, they're not just a commercial firm that happens to do a few cities. It's very clear to me that they do a lot of municipal work, so that I really support this. Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. This time we'll have discussion and possible action on ordinance fourteen seventy-six, an ordinance of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, amending chapter eighty-two. Articles one, two, and three by deleting their entirety. Section eighty-two dash one through eighty-two dash six, adopting new section eighty-two dash one state of purpose, eighty-two dash two to define terms. Section eighty-two dash three to limit times for solicitation excluding specific invitations or appointments. Section eighty-two dash four to require orders to be duplicate. Section eighty-two point five to eighty-two dash five to prohibit solicitation on posted premises in the absence of of a prior invitation or appointment. Section eighty-two dash six to prohibit soliciting in roadways or public rights of way unless specifically prohibited. Or specifically permitted, I'm sorry. Section eighty-two dash seven, creating the no-knock list and prohibiting solicitation at residences residences on the no-knock list. Deleting in their entirety sections eighty-two dash twenty-nine through eighty-two dash fifty-six. Adopting new section eighty-two dash twenty-nine, requiring solicitor permits. Stating times for application and requiring carrying of permit and photo identification. New section eighty-two dash thirty, creating application requirements, requiring referral and background check. Establishing minimum age for solicitor permit and providing for permit renewal. New section eighty-two dash thirty-one, establishing application and renewal permit fees. New section eighty-two dash thirty-two, providing issuance. Denial or revocation procedures and requirements. New section eighty-two dash thirty-three, providing causes for revocation of permits. And section eighty-two dash thirty-four prohibiting transfer of permits and amending section eighty-two dash fifty-seven to modify exemptions from ordinance. Uh, providing for repealer, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. I make a motion to approve this ordinance with one amendment to section eighty-two dash fifty-seven A to add. Specifically comma, space, scholastic between the words scouts and religious to include school fundraisers in this list of exemptions. Do I hear a second?
A second.
That idea uh to kick off the discussion here, that idea was brought to me by Councilmember Zimmerman. Thank you. A big, big thank you to, not thank you for this long thing to read, uh, City Attorney Reinhardt, but a big thank you. Uh, City Attorney Reinhardt has worked really for the last three weeks um to craft this this ordinance. And it's it's not easy uh to consider all the different constitutional challenges, all the case law. Um, and really the key thing is consider our own community here, knowing it, knowing the city staff, hearing from community feedback. Giving a lot of consideration. I know, I want to say thank you to you for crafting this.
Thank you, Mayor.
I've had so many people already reach out. I posted this and they're like, how where do we sign up for this no-knock list?
Yeah, developments, I believe development services if I.
Yes, I that's I said, when it gets passed, um, I've also had several cities broken arrows, one of them that said, please send us this ordinance. They want to copy this.
Can we charge them a fee, Attorney Reinhardt, to recoup some of our legal expenses?
By all means, and we'll need to share it with Mustang.
Okay.
Broken arrows triple the cost.
Yeah, triple the cost for Broken Arrow.
I I wanted to say thank you too because I was worried when there was a challenge to this, we were gonna change it and I I really liked the way that turned out.
Agreed.
Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action on approving the emergency clause for ordinance fourteen seventy-six. Uh, I make a motion to approve this ordinance, uh, this emergency clause. Um, and I'll give the reason in a minute, but uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, this one, in the case of the prior ordinance, we put a moratorium, as you all remember from the prior meeting, we put a moratorium that expires at the end of this month. So we really do uh for the preservation of peace, to enhance the safety in our neighborhoods, we need to enact this ordinance immediately. Mister Castle.
Now, if this is an emergency ordinance, I can get behind.
I do too.
Thank you, Mister, thank you, Mister Castle. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna skip ahead and go to item twenty-four. Item twenty-four, we will have discussion and possible action regarding city manager job posting and applications received with an update from the HR director. To be really efficient with time, I'm gonna make my motion and then we're gonna have the update from Tamara, so have her come up. Uh, I make a motion to direct the acting city manager to ensure that the HR staff prepares binders of the pre-screened candidates. The candidate applications we've received for the city manager position. The only pre-screening that should be performed by the HR team is a screening to assess whether each candidate meets the minimum standards as outlined in the job descriptions. And they should provide a list of all candidates that were screened out and the reason for screening them out. These binders with all candidates are to be delivered to council members at the July fifteenth council meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any uh, and now I'd like for uh uh Ms. Vickery to present the current uh state of affairs when it comes to the uh job posting.
Sure. Okay, so right now I'll do a little recap. That way we know when we posted it. Um, the job was originally posted on May sixteenth to our city website through NeoGov. The posting remained open for thirty days and officially closed on June sixteenth. In addition to that posting, I also reached out to the thirty-four prior applicants from our previous hiring process. Nine of those applicants reapplied. Including the that nine, we have a total of forty-five applica- applications, um, thirty-one from in-state, fourteen from out-of-state. Really, that's about all I have to report on that right now. Do you have any questions for me?
How many of those do you feel are viable? I mean, the last time, I think we had some that they like just got out.
I would say half.
Half, okay.
We have some good applicants, so.
And you and your team are gonna go through those.
Yes.
Assess, assess whether they meet the minimum requirements. That's the only screening that they'll do. Then we'll get a binder with all of them. And we can be begin that evaluation process at the July fifteenth meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery.
You're welcome.
Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. At this time, I'm gonna jump into twenty-five. Do we have any new business, Madam Clerk?
No, Mister Mayor.
I'm gonna jump to number twenty-six and get a financial update from Finance Director Brian Chris. I'm I'm jumping around a little bit to uh allow city staff to leave, to to go home while we do a little executive session at the end.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm I'm gonna start the conversation. It it may feel like the presentation takes forever to get through. Um, but I promise if you will stay till the end, um, there is a great slide at the end that, um, anyway, super exciting to be able to share with you. Um, the first page here um that you're gonna see in the presentation if. There we go. Um, looks a little different than the prior month's uh presentation. Um, previously, you've been shown um our bank account balances and while that information is relevant. Um, a better indicator of our actual financial situation um is to show fund account balances. Um, so this is a summary by fund. It includes um claims on cash from other funds um within the city, uh CDs and then any cash equivalents. So um, you can see throughout here um kind of the overview. Um, at end of May, about sixty-eight million dollars in total um account balance um across the various funds. Um, we have with the hiring of the city treasurer in the last uh month or so. Um, come a long way in reconciling a lot of accounts. Um, we do still have a few uh pulled cash accounts we're getting through. Um, so we're still likely to see some changes here, but um but very positive overall as far as fund balance goes um within the city. Um, within that fund balance, um, we have some CD holdings. Um, roughly nineteen million of that is in CDs, um, so earning interest um in that regard in this way. Um, they are held in three separate funds, seventy, seventy-nine, and eighty-eight. Um, into our sales tax collection for the month of June, we collected two point three million dollars. Uh, it's flat compared to fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Where we also collected two point three million. We are down slightly year-to-date of about two point seven eight percent in sales tax revenues. Uh, total collected year-to-date is twenty-seven point eight million dollars. This pie chart shows you kind of the breakdown of what we received and how it's divvied out within the city. So four cents of sales tax um is what we receive. That's allocated between five different funds. It's broken out here. Two cents goes to the general fund. That's used for general city operations. Three-quarter cent goes to capital improvement funds for major improvements to city infrastructure. Uh, a three-quarter cents goes to a public employee's uh sales tax. Uh, that is then broken up further between three separate um employee accounts. A quarter cent goes to general fund reserves. That's a reserve that we keep within the city. Um, and the final quarter percent goes again back to capital funds that was uh approved in two thousand and six. The next slide is our use tax. The way to think about use tax is it's a tax that we receive um from purchases made outside um of Yukon. Ordered something online and had it shipped, that would be a use tax. We received uh down quite a bit, two hundred and forty-eight thousand for the month of June. Um, I did dig into this. It's down a lot from the month prior and the prior period last year. All of our top ten were down pretty significantly across. Um, there is sometimes a misreporting that occurs and we'll see an increase in the next month. That's the only on- only example I can think of that might um, might de- decline.
Have you followed up with the tax commission on it?
I have not yet, but I can.
Yeah, I think it's it's good. It's good. I mean, the, I think that the tax commission, in my experience, is really engaged, like they, they're, I can't say that about every department of state government, but I, I've had pleasant experiences there.
Absolutely, and I failed to mention, I did look back through, listed a few of our largest ones just to show the decrease of what we typically collect from those. So, but I'll definitely, I can reach out and let you know what I find out from them as well. Again, pie chart just shows the breakdown. Three cents of that always goes to the general fund, one cent of it going to capital improvement. And so that's the breakdown for, for where those funds go every single month. This next slide is, two slides, they kind of look similar. The question came up at the last finance presentation and it's much appreciated. From January until this, just now in June, as this shows, we have not received any gas excise tax. We are outside of the window on our financial audit being completed. So once that is completed and turned into the state auditor's office, we will receive those funds back, but they do hold them in that time period.
Do we intend to get that audit for this July fifteenth council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
The next slide immediately following is the same slide, but it shows the additional gas excise tax. That's probably a better indicator of what the actual situation looks like. Two-hundred-and-nine thousand year-to-date collected versus two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in the prior year. Year-to-date decrease of about fifteen thousand or six-point-nine-nine percent. The next slide is our franchise fees. These are fees, fee revenue that's paid by various franchises. Of note, we have not received telephone franchise yet for this year. We will receive it this month, but it's not in this end-of-May reporting period that you're being shown today. So that number is skewed slightly, and likely we'll jump up quite a bit with that, with that telephone franchise.
I know we're meeting with OGD next week, so perhaps we can get an answer if they have any insight or analysis on why our electrical franchise tax is down year-to-date. That's a little surprising to me.
Sure. Next slide is just a general overview, revenue summary for the general fund, again through May of two thousand and twenty-five. It represents ninety-one-point-six-seven percent of our fiscal year. If you look at the bottom columns there, percent of budget, we're at about eighty-five-point-six-four percent of year-to-date collections from the budget, so we are down slightly. That sales tax revenue really is a big driver and that's really how the city operates. So any, any additional things we can do, and I know council is working very hard to bring all those sales tax dollars that we can, but it's vital and key to keeping the city as successful as we have been and will continue to be. General fund expenditure summary, this, to answer kind of the question that we talked about earlier, Councilwoman Selby. Eighty-six-point-three-nine percent to the ninety-one-point-six-seven percent that we are through the year. So in a great spot within the general fund specifically. Year-to-date, we've only spent thirty-one-point-five million versus thirty-six-point-five is the full-year budget. There are some of those, and that's why those budget amendments were needed, that are anticipated to potentially go over. But overall, city staff really has done an outstanding job of trying to manage that and trying to make sure even in the financial climate that we're in to be very mindful of spending, so.
I think that's a, it's a huge credit to City Manager Castro, and Acting City Manager Deckard, and all the city staff, the department leaders that, that have the ability to move the needle on these, on these particular budget items and on these expenditures. They've been very disciplined and I feel like we're doing more with less.
This next slide is enterprise revenue and expenditures, so it is our water and sewer sanitation and stormwater enterprises. I couldn't have made this one match closer if I wanted to. We're ninety-one-point-six-seven percent through the year. We've brought in ninety-one-point-nine percent of our budget for the year and our collections. I'm sorry, I should say expenditures at the bottom there, but expenditures are ninety-one-point-seven-nine percent as well, so tracking extremely well within the enterprise funds. And finally, the slide I'm probably most excited to share with you, and as we enter into fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, this is going to expand and grow, so we can see much more detailed breakdown of where our investments are at, what they're earning. But this is just a brief snapshot of year-end interest earnings. In year-end two thousand and twenty-three, we, for the entirety of the year across all funds, three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars worth of interest earned. At the year-end two thousand and twenty-four, we're able to grow that a hundred-and-seventy-one percent. The year-end interest earned across all funds at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. The next column is what is beyond exciting and like I said, a testament truly to council. We appreciate all the efforts that have been made to help support the growth that the city has seen, but one-point-six million dollars of interest earnings year-to-date in two thousand and twenty-five, so this does not include June. I also wanted to note, I manually calculated this. We still are working through some of those reconciliations. I likely under-reported this slightly. There's likely some that was not recognized yet in the accounting system.
And we got another month to go.
Correct, with an entire month to go.
It's going to be amazing.
So two-hundred-and-fifty percent increase over last year's interest earnings, so interest rates have been definitely very favorable, but.
Mister Chris, would you please say that again?
Sure, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine percent increase year-over-year.
I gotta say it, that's a lot of chickens.
That is a lot of chickens.
Yeah, thank, thank goodness, thank goodness that the money.
Let's hire those people back.
Lots of chickens. Thank you goodness that we.
In baseball terms, that's almost like stealing home.
Right, thank you, Mister Chris, for that thorough update. Acting City Manager Deckard, do you have any updates for us?
Not at this time, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. This time, we'll open up the floor for each councilperson to say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognitions, et cetera. It's not intended for the conduct of city business by members of the public body. Councilmember Selby.
I would just like to say a thank you to Jason Beal, who resigned last week. I found out about it this week. Jason, if you're watching, you are greatly missed and thank you for your years of service. We will miss you. Also, remember, Fourth of July is next week. We do not do fireworks in city limits. That's Mustang. They do it. Yes, so please remember that. I have dogs. They don't like them.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
I think you need to talk to some of my neighbors, because apparently we do. No, I just wanted to say happy Fourth of July. It's my favorite holiday, celebrating the wonderful breakup letter that Thomas Jefferson wrote to King George, saying, it's not us, it's you, and that's why today we don't have a king. All right, so happy Fourth of July. Be safe.
Uh, Councilmember Shriver.
I don't have much this week. Happy Fourth of July. Go Thunder. Kudos to us for winning the championship. Y'all be safe on Fourth.
Vice Mayor Wooten.
Happy Fourth of July. Also want to, I know you've been on the, at the head for what, two weeks now? But I've talked to a few of the employees and they've just raved about the things that you're doing in office. I want to say thank you.
I have to apologize. I do not have the events update, which I should have, and that was given to me.
The third of July and the fourth of July.
Yeah, the third of July, things, things kick off at the city park on the third of July at five P M.
If you have a child on the Fourth, then we have a parade, and so have your child come to the parade at ten o'clock.
And before that, I'm going to do all this from memory, before that, at seven-thirty A M at City Splash, there's a, I believe it's a youth triathlon, which is wonderful, and then it's all day, it's all day July fourth, so starts at seven A M. The parade that, are you going to be judging, Councilmember Selby?
Yes, I am. I am. It's a very difficult job.
Councilmember Selby will be judging. There's all sorts of other fun stuff all day. City Park, Chisholm Trail Park, July fourth, July third, and we're going to have music both nights. I believe, I'm going to get all this wrong, and I'm going to look like an idiot. I believe it kicks off at, the music I think kicks off at eight o'clock and thereabouts, and then fireworks at ten, I believe. Don't, don't, don't crucify me for getting that wrong. With that, we will dismiss city staff that don't necessarily have to be here, and we'll take up item twenty-one. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action to enter into executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three-zero-seven B three to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. Could I have Mister Chris, if he's available, Mister Deckard and Mister Reinhardt join us?
I just thought you were getting to go home.
At this time, we'll have a motion to recon. At this time, we'll have a motion to reconvene from executive session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby. Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes. I'll now read the minutes from executive session. During the executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed. No action was taken and no votes were cast. We will strike item twenty-three as there's no action to be taken and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.